Good evening to everyone. We appreciate you coming and welcome you to Greentownship for the school board meeting for this evening. I would like to turn it over to Dr. Moore so that she can introduce our Greentownship.
I'd like to introduce the principal, Mr. Paul Spar. He has some students who will do this in a quick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's nice to see so much support for Greentownship Elementary. We usually don't get this big of a crowd. As many of you may know, the teachers and staff have been working hard to incorporate agricultural concepts into the classroom instruction. Last night at the annual meeting of the Morgan County Soil and Water Conservation District, Greentownship Elementary was honored with an award for agricultural education. We'd like to thank the board and the community for all their support for this program. And as you exit, it's actually hanging on the wall to your left. And just be sure to thank the teachers while they're in the building.
We can have our Greentownship teachers and staff stand up here in the audience? Everybody from Greentownship. We'd like to thank them on behalf of the board for all their work they've done for agricultural education. We think it's very exciting to see the new program and enhance our already there engagement.
This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Opportunities for public participation will be permitted in accordance with the policy. Each week before we have a board meeting, each board member receives a packet containing everything on the agenda, which gives us a week to look at things, research things, ask questions, and be ready for the meeting tonight. We will now be having public comments regarding agenda items. And if you signed up, there would have been a green paper there, and I will read the part that applies to this. On specific board agenda items, a visitor to the meeting may make comments before a vote is taken on a given agenda item. The board president may allow a time allotment for this purpose, but that person will be limited to no more than five minutes. Tonight, due to the number of people signed up, each person will be allotted three minutes and not more than 20 minutes for a total given agenda if the item is more than one person from the public speaks. Any comments from the public will be addressed to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or administrators attending the given board meeting. Dr. Trichun will introduce each of you. He will time you and then tell you when your time is up. We appreciate all of your comments, and we... Some of us might be writing down as you were talking, so don't be offended if we don't look at you because it helps to write things down that you say. So I will turn it over to Dr. Trichun.
Thank you. Just for the sake of procedure, I will call your name. Please come forward. We will... Once you begin is when the time will start. I will try to give you about a 30-second notice just so you can begin to wrap up comments if you need that much time. The first speaker is Mr. Luke Jackson.
Just throw something at me when I get close and it'll be good. This is actually my date night with my wife. I'm sure she would have appreciated a more romantic setting, but here we are. I did want to thank the five of you for your service to our community. I know all five of you at various levels, and I respect you, and I know that each of you have the best interest at heart for our kids, and I appreciate that. That's why I voted for all five of you. I am here, though, tonight because there's one item on the agenda that I have some concerns about. My son, Ethan, is a kindergarten student at Paragon Elementary in Ms. Hodges' class. And I have read just recently, actually yesterday, we were made aware that his principal, Mrs. Oswald, would be up at this meeting to have her license, I guess, building administrator license revoked or removed, to be transferred out of that. You know, I was thinking about that last night, and I can remember, as an elementary student, I had Mr. Lou Feggins as my principal. Some of you may know Mr. Feggins. And through all of my academic career, through graduate, postgraduate work, I've worked with a lot of different educators, but no one had as much impact on me as he did. In fact, he actually frequents Starbucks quite often. I'll know when he's there, and I'll try to catch him because he still gives me some encouragement, even a couple decades later, because he made an impact on me, because he was kind and he was good. We loved him, and we trusted him. And he's the type of person that understood what it meant, that if you're going to be a leader, you don't come to serve. You don't come to be served, but you come to serve. That teaching's been around for about 2,000 years. I think it's withstood the test of time. Of all things that I could wish for my kids, I wish that they could have somebody like Mr. Feggins was to me. Because when it's all said and done, the numbers don't matter. I don't remember what the numbers were with South Elementary School back in the 90s. But I do know there was a man I respected, and there's still a man even today in my schedule that I try to make time to see. I want my kids to have that. And it's with my full professional and confidence opinion, they do have that. They have that in Mrs. Oswald. Ethan has that, and I hope and pray someday that Addie will have it and Levi will have it also. Of all the people, I believe that it's probably most of the will of the community that it remains that way. And I would encourage each of you to do and keep what I know you have as best interest... Okay, he's ready to throw something at me, so I'll stop. Keep the best interests of the kids at heart still. Paragon is a community with kids that have a lot of trouble at home, many of them. Sometimes the school is the only place where they have safety and trust and feel they can belong. Don't take that from them. Thank you very much, and again, I appreciate your service.
We appreciate your comments. Next on the list is Mr. Nate Bass.
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Lips for what she's done for my son and our family and some of our friends' family. I heard that she might be being voted out also. She's done a lot for my son. My son went from being expelled, I don't know, $10? I mean expelled. And one of the students that we teach was that, you know, he'd get into with. My principal, ever since then, he has started that career at a preschool there, Huser Mills, because of Susie and Willing. And he's already had, and he's not even through his first year yet, he's been told by union companies that his work that they sent in to have tested by him is the best they've seen of him, two-year students even. That's all because of her. She changed him. She's changed a lot in our house, and I hope you keep her too. Thanks, Amy.
Next is Mr. Andy Moore.
Just here to talk about Mrs. Lips. Mrs. Lips hired me in 2007, a young kid coming out of college, for my first job in education, and for that I'll ever forever be indebted to her. For her, I taught special education at West Middle School for about three years. I taught health for several years, but things got tough in the school district. I got out of my comfort zone. She encouraged me. She wanted to keep me around as opposed to me leaving, and I agreed to teach history. After that, I taught P.E. in the district as well. I was here up until 2017, so I worked for Susie for almost 10 years, 10 complete years. Chose to follow Susie's lead to Bell Intermediate Academy where we opened a new school. She opened it. I would think I had something to do with helping out there. Things that Susie's taught me and given to me, she's trusted me, motivated me, inspired me, encouraged, educated, pushed me, invested in me, related to me. She's coached me. She's listened to me. Most importantly, she's had my back. In this community, Mrs. Lips, she's a teacher, she's a leader, she's an active community member, loving parent, sister, friend, and wife. She cares about the town of Martinsville. She's well-liked by the kids, the students, teachers, all the way down to custodians, parents of the community as well. I've not met too many people that have too many bad things to say about Susie. She's also what I like to consider a coach. And, you know, a coach, that's one of the reasons I got into education, was to coach and coach football, which I still do to this day in Center Grove. Taught in Center Grove, I now teach at Central Night Career Center. But a teacher or administrator isn't measured in wins and losses, but they're measured in their successes in education. She's been in education since 1984. I think I was a year old. She's been in this for a long time. She's been a principal for 24 years, a winning principal. She turned West Middle School into a school. She started Bell Intermediate, and it was an A school. As a principal of Hammond, she's increased enrollment, increased graduation rates. Susie creates good climates, culture in our buildings. I was there for the climate audit as well, which I don't know if the results of that have ever come out. She creates great environments for the students. Kids love to come to school, from the pep rallies to the dances, the games, carnivals and things that we put on, they absolutely love it. Staff love her, and they love working for her. Why remove a winning coach, a winning leader, and a winning principal? Thank you. Going into definition of a leader was what I was going to do next. Everyone has that capacity to be a leader. Leadership is a skill that is practiced over time, over years, over school years. Some people don't wish to lead, some people shouldn't lead. Some people try to lead and are unsuccessful in their attempt. Some people shouldn't lead and don't, or should lead and don't. Some leaders are appointed and have the authority over us yet are unsuccessful. Some naturally become leaders and are successful, but some, some people want to lead, have the ability to lead, to motivate, encourage, and inspire, and that's what Susie has. She has courage, courage to stand up to others with outside pressure. Leaders get the person to their left and to their right to follow them. That's why we followed here tonight for Susie. I followed her to West Middle School. I followed her to Bell Intermediate Academy. We followed her here tonight. Susie, I have her back. The people in this room have her back, and hopefully the people at this table have her back. The MSD of Martinsville needs you. Thank you.
Next on the list is Mrs. Susan Burley.
My name is Susan Burley. I have some questions regarding items on the consent agenda. I had the opportunity to review the minutes from the December 4th, 2018 meeting, and at that school board meeting, I noted that Dr. Moore made a comment and a statement asking permission to not renew the contract of two administrators. It was my understanding that the two administrative positions that were notified they were being cut at that time was the Title I Director and the Hammond Alternative School Director. I understand that since that time, the Title I Director actually has resigned as she found out her employment. That's noted on the consent agenda. I also see on tonight's agenda that the other administrative position being cut is the Paragon principal. So I'm sort of questioning, is that really two positions you're cutting or three? What I'd also like to know is what is the process that you used to determine that these positions, specifically Mrs. Lips and Mrs. Oswald, are the most expendable of the two administrative positions? Specifically, these two positions are significantly impactful to the most at-risk of our student populations, and I would like to know why Dr. Moore determined that these positions were to be cut. While I don't support you making these cuts, if you do, I also want to know what is the plan for leadership of Paragon and Hammond's? Who's going to lead these schools and ensure that the students and teachers have the guidance and support that they need? And also, from the minutes of the December 4th meeting, because we're talking about process and procedure, can you tell us how Dr. Moore's contract has been amended based on her statement to drop four days a month from her paid contract? Was there a process followed to amend her contract? As I don't recall seeing that in any public school board vote or meeting. And was there a subsequent process to amend Dr. Trichun's contract to pay him for those days? I believe that these things were stated, they were tied to budget constraints, and this doesn't make sense to me. The numbers don't add up. I'm concerned that proper procedures have not been followed. Dr. Moore stated the reason to cut the two administrative positions was on a tight budget. Again, how does that tie specifically to the decision to cut the Title I, Hammond's, and Paragon positions, which really is three? I would strongly encourage you and ask that you vote no on your proposal to cut Mrs. Oswald and Mrs. Susie Lips' positions. I actually have some great ideas as to where you could find other savings in administrative positions that do not directly impact our students and our teachers. I'd be happy to share those with you at some point when I'm not on a three-minute time clock. Thank you.
Next is Jeremy Drake.
Hello, everyone. Thank you highly for speaking this evening. I'm Jeremy Drake. I'm a new parent at Paragon Elementary, and I'm here in support of Mrs. Oswald. So I'd like to read a letter that I emailed you guys this week. Dear school board, It's been brought to my attention that the board is not planning on renewing Principal Oswald's contract next year. I must say that I was quite taken back to here this news. My wife and I have two children in Paragon Elementary, and we adore Mrs. Oswald. When she came to our school, she was a breath of fresh air and brought a sense of care and dedication that reminded us of Principal Royall, only in a younger version. We felt very lucky that she was chosen as the new principal after a very checkered history of principals at our school. We look forward to a long run of dedication and consistency from Mrs. Oswald. I've tried to take a step back and question what might be some reasoning behind such a huge decision that not only affects Mrs. Oswald, but also the teachers' parents, and most importantly, the students of school that I've held home for over 30 years. On a very short timeline, I've looked at aspects provided by the school district's website. Test scores, school grades, and a variety of other documents all show that there is no doubt a downward trajectory, but not much different from the district as a whole. Does this mean that the scoring model has changed? Does this mean standards have gone up? Does this mean testing has a new platform? Have funds been cut? Are we asking our leaders and teachers to do more with less? Are we substituting licensed teachers with aides in order to save money? Are we taking away aides from teachers who need them? I don't have the answers to all these questions, and I only bring them up in order to give the board a 30,000-foot view of the system that gets so inundated with politics, red tape, and budgets that we sometimes let that cloud our minds from the simplest of answers. In my line of work, if the supervisor is not hitting the marks that we require of her, it is most commonly related to upper management not giving them the tools, training, or guidance needed to do so. In my business, if an employee is fired, if he's fired, the failure lies with the manager, not the subordinate. We look for reasons to keep our employees and train them up. If you have the right individual, find a way to help her succeed. My wife and I are highly motivated, I'm sorry, highly involved with volunteering, PTO, fundraising, and making sure our children succeed within the confines of Paragon Elementary. We are not alone. We are the type of parents, we are not the type of parents that fly off the handle at any small incident or accident affair. We are the type that realizes without a supportive household, children are doomed to a life of underachievement. If test scores are the benchmark, you have a parent issue, not a staff issue. With many demographics throughout our school district and no standardized tests will ever be able to account for them all, we do not have the luxury of end picking our students. Some principals have it harder than others. I'm sure since Mrs. Oswald has been hired, she has had extensive training and expense added to her employment equity. If we let her go, who answers for the loss of revenue that we can never get back? Replacing employees is far more expensive than wrapping our arms around them and helping them succeed.
About 20 seconds.
What happens if you replace Mrs. Oswald, and can scores continue to drop? Are you going to replace the next principal due to scores, or are you going to change the process and get to the end of the problem? Mrs. Oswald is well-respected by the parents, teachers, and children of Paragon Elementary, and we want her as our leader and principal. I ask you to prayerfully reconsider your position on this matter and at a minimum delay the vote until next month's meeting that is going to be held at Paragon Elementary. That will give everyone involved more time to discuss and dig into what might be the best option for our children. There has to be another answer. Let's figure it out together. I believe that the board has been elected by the public to let our voices be heard on a higher level. Our voice is not behind this decision. Please reconsider. Thank you.
So I'm not going to take the whole three minutes so you can share it for somebody else. Ms. Debbie Lips set precedent on May 25th, 2017, at John Wooden Hill Middle School when she recused herself from voting for, well, it was a retroactive vote for Susie Lips' administratively. Is it safe to assume that she will be recusing herself this evening as well in the vote for the elimination of her position at Hammond's as director? No answer?
Typically, the board takes comments. They don't typically respond. And that's how it's typically done.
Okay, that's fine. And if she chooses not to recuse herself, then can we be assured that she will remain impartial in keeping the interest of the kids and especially the kids at Hammond's, best interest at heart?
Next on the list is Mrs. Julie James.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the leadership team. The MSD of Martinsville budget hearing for 2019 was held on September 9th, 2018, and the superintendent's PowerPoint presentation is posted on the MSD website. In slide number nine, our financial position in 2018, July 1, 2014, we had $17.6 million in funds. July 31, 2018, we ended the month with $22.6 million in funds, a 28% increase in cash balance. Slide number 19, to summarize said financially, we are in good financial position. Help me understand the following sequence of events, as no clear communication has been provided since that budgetary statement was made. The superintendent requested the school board recently approve the addition of the following two administrative positions to the overall MSD staff. Assistant Special Education Director in June 2018, Safety Director in October 2018. If you advertised just a few short months ago to the public that our school district was in good financial position and approved the addition of two new administrative positions, why are we now voting to eliminate two administrative positions? How much money will the school corporation actually save by eliminating the position of Title I? Is there a current plan in place to replace the principal at Paragon Elementary, or will there be an alternative leadership role shift, such as that which we saw when Dr. Moore became a part-time superintendent? Which I might add, some question the procedural ethics in that move. Will there be another salary contract alteration, such as that which we saw when Dr. Trichun's contract was altered? Again, without public input. How much money will the school corporation save by eliminating the position of Director of Hammond's Alternative School? What alternative leadership is planned? Additional cost? Once again, the lack of transparency by this administration is unmatched by any in my experience. Our Title I Director resigned and took another job in Wilmington when she learned her position would be eliminated. This is yet another loss for our staff, our students, and our community, continuing in the now years-long mass exodus of staff from our school system. This community and our children deserve better, far better than they are currently receiving. Is the voice of the people, your constituents, being heard? Are you being heard?
Your name's on this list. You're okay. Maybe you meant it was the sign-in list for attendance, so scratch that. Next is Mrs. Stacy Sanders.
I'm not a woman of any words, but when I believe in something, I believe in it. And I've had five kids go through Tiffany. Three of them are still there. Okay? As a parent, she is easy to talk to. She loves my kids. I don't leave with her state when she's sick. She knows my kids by name, ones that I'm not there for. She knows them by name. She knows her personality. She knows each and every student there, and she gets eyes of her personality and helping her fight with whatever's on. Thank you for being the principal that my kids look up to. Now, as a staff at Paragon Elementary, Tiffany is very easy to work for. She's easy to go to if you have an issue. She's not confrontational. She's not hard-headed. She likes to sit down with you and figure out the problem and get a result. Now, to the board, to administrators, whoever. What did you do to help Tiffany or Mrs. Oswald in the areas where she needed support? Did you give her that support? Did you provide her with an easy-go-to support, or were you being intimidating? Is she intimidated to go to you, like a lot of us parents and teachers are intimidated to go to you and talk to you? Did you provide her with a mentor, somebody that can, you know, she could go to, they could take her under her wing and give her that support that she needs to improve herself or improve wherever she needs to be improved, which I don't think she does? And if there was an issue, why were there no administrators present at the school on a regular basis? As a parent, if I was just a parent, I would never see any administrators there. But as a staff member, I see you very seldom at Paragon School. Those are my questions.
Next is Mrs. Katie Knox.
Good evening. I don't know if you can hear me.
You're good.
I'm here to speak on behalf of Suzie Lipp. My daughter, actually, first it was my stepson, Valentin Hammond. He wouldn't have graduated if it wasn't for her. And now my daughter, Nivea, goes to that school. She wouldn't have a future in school if it wasn't for her. This woman is the most passionate woman I've ever seen in education. Sorry, I didn't want to cry. My daughter lost her father right before Christmas. Nobody else from my daughter's education has ever come to the funeral, not one person, but she did. She didn't have to do that. She did that because she's passionate and she loves her students. That says a lot. And to get rid of her position would be a very big dishonor to not only the students but the school. When it comes to the students of Martinsville, it's the parents. We're the ones, you know, it's our kids' future. So we should have a say in what the position needs to be. I don't know, my kids don't go to Paragon, but I know Mrs. Oswald, and I know she's amazing. She's passionate and, you know, she, she doesn't need to lose her position either. I don't understand why the board gets to play with the future of our children. Because that seems what's going on here, and it's not the first time. You're getting rid of some amazing people who are really doing wonders with these children. Hammond's is a last resort, especially for my children, my child. I mean, she didn't make it at high school. She's got mental health problems. So that's why she's at Hammond's. I mean, Mrs. Lipp has done an amazing job with her, and I've seen her do amazing jobs with the rest of the students when I've been there and visited. You would be, it would be very difficult for my own child to get through the rest of the two years that she has without Mrs. Lipp.
Very good.
That's all I need to say. Thank you.
The final speaker is Mrs. Shannon Adams.
At this time, I'm going to pass.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. That wraps up all the speakers. We appreciate your input and sharing your thoughts and concerns and questions with
Okay, we will proceed to the consent agenda. I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I, for a second, please.
All seven.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement. Can I have a microphone? My name is Don Lipp, and I'm kind of the new person on the block here. This is my first year as a member of the school board. Because of a legal conflict of interest as part of this consent agenda, I will not be able to vote on the consent agenda this evening. However, I would like to make a statement for the record. I was elected for this board to represent you, the constituents, and make decisions that I believe are in the best interest of our school district. With that in mind, I am opposed to the motions in the consent agenda recommending the transfer of two administrators to the classroom. Over the course of the last several years, our district has lost many good staff members, administrators, teachers, and non-certified employees in an effort to save money. Our district has suffered from these changes, and the continuation of this practice will continue to hurt our district even more. It is time we make decisions based on what is best for our students, our staff, and our school community. The real problem our district continues to face is decreased enrollment. This year alone, 667 of the students living in our district have chosen to attend other schools. Let me repeat, 13% of our students attend other schools. The challenge of this school board and our district leadership should be to find out why our students are leaving our schools and how we can get them back. I believe the items requesting the unwilling transfer of two of our current administrators to the classroom should be deleted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen, on the board, we next ask for you to approve student field trips and professional travel. Martinsville High School BPA requests to go to the state leadership conference. Martinsville High School DECA also requests to go to the state career development conference. The girls' basketball team requests to go to a field trip, and they also request to have middle school team.
Okay, I ask for a motion to approve the student field trips and professional travel as requested.
I move to approve the field trips and professional travel.
A second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? And the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And it passes.
This is a public business meeting.
Tiffany is helping through so much, and my kids, you're destroying kids' lives.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you can't sit down, you need to leave the meeting.
I hope you guys can sleep well at night because it's not fair.
Mr. Foley, could you help them up?
Next, we'd ask the board to approve the revision of the bi-laws and policies, please.
I ask for a motion to approve the new or revised policies as requested.
I move to approve the new and revised policies.
A second, please.
All seven.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Next, we'd ask our safety director, Tim Foley, to come. He's going to present information about a new stoppage safety net.
Thank you. I won't take too much of your time. I just wanted to update the board about some new systems we're looking at for reporting for bullying, threats against the school. And it's kind of an institutional stage, so I'll give you some information. It's an app that goes on kids' phones that they can actually report. And instead of investigating a threat, we can actually communicate without anonymity to get real-time information to assist in investigations into threats against the school system. So I appreciate your time, and I just wanted to update the board on what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, we would ask the board to approve donations from our hairy patrons. Mrs. Jenny, this year tonight, we would especially like to thank her for generous contributions to the MHS choir VCA.
Ask for a motion to accept the donations, sponsorships, and grants as requested.
I move to accept the donation, sponsorship, and grants.
A second, please.
All seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Next, Dr. Trabun is going to discuss the early childhood education classes.
We have been working to move our early childhood classes from Hoosier Hills to on-campus here at Martinsville High School. And part of that has been able to happen because we've started our daycare, the RD daycare at the Central Ed Center. Our fax teachers will be able to help kind of facilitate, I guess, facilitate the classes and work with our daycare providers so that our kids can get that same credit here at Martinsville and not have to travel to Bloomington. But in order to do that, we will have to have our own curriculum, and that's what this is for, to add textbooks to our current curriculum.
I ask for a motion to approve the textbooks as requested.
I move to approve the textbooks.
And second, please.
Aye, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you.
And next is a request to approve a contract with us, the SCIS team, which is the insurance trust for the school district. They pay our school district custodial fees for the employee wellness clinic that we maintain by boarding middle school.
I ask for a motion to approve the agreement as requested, please.
I move to approve the agreement.
A second, please.
All seven.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion passes.
And the next motion is Resolution 423. We would ask the board to authorize emergency repair to a failed sewer line at Bell Intermediate Academy and it should not exceed $15,500.
I ask for a motion to approve Resolution 423 as requested.
I move to approve the resolution.
A second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you.
And next, Dave Reddick is going to be talking to us. He has some information about a state historical marker at Martinsville.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is David Reddick. One of the advantages of being retired is I get to do a lot of different things in the community. One of the real pleasures that I had last fall involved this school. One of my jobs is to be the volunteer executive director of the Morgan County Coalition for Literacy. And last fall, my group donated some money to help with the readers, I can't remember the name of them, that, hold on, kindergarten students to give them a jump start on learning how to read. The money for that came from one of your teachers who passed away in December of 2017, Jolie Donovan. She was the teacher at this school for a number of years. A lot of the parents, teachers from this school donated money in lieu of flowers at her funeral. And what I group did was we created a special fund in her honor. And it was our pleasure to come out here in the fall to do that, and we're looking forward perhaps to being able to do it again this year. Now, that's one hat I wear. The other hat I wear is I was the Morgan County Coordinator for the bicentennial. In that role, one of the things that my committee and I did was to secure a state historical marker to mark the centennial of the state flag and to honor Paul Hadley in Mooresville. And because of that relationship with the Indiana Historical Bureau, one day when I was up at the state library doing some research on the possibility of writing a book about Indiana State Flag, I was approached by the director of the Indiana Historical Bureau who said, "Have you guys ever thought of doing a state historical marker to honor Glenn Curtis?" And I'll tell you, I didn't know a whole lot about Glenn Curtis at the time because I'm originally from Morgan County. But my colleague, Janice Mullinger, knew everything about him, knew his family, had, I think, worked with him at one time. In any event, we came back to Martinsville to talk to a service organization that was thinking of doing a wooden memorial. We asked them if they would be interested in pursuing this idea to honor Glenn Curtis, and they said they would. So we took it upon ourselves, Janice and I, to do the paperwork, to submit an application to secure this marker for Glenn Curtis. Well, the next thing we knew, the Historical Bureau, board of directors voted to approve that idea. Part of what I think had to do with the director at that time of the Historical Bureau, who was a big-time basketball fan, and he had helped Monrovia get a historical marker the year before for Branch McCracken. So that was, I think, part of the emphasis. So I'm here tonight because, well, this has been approved. It's been kind of in stall mode for the last few months. It has been approved. There are really three things that are left to have to occur. One is, because it's been approved, the next step for the Historical Bureau is to have the property owner, which in this case would be the school board, approve the erection of this marker on the school property. Our intention would be to, and we talked to Dr. Moore about this, of putting it in front of the gymnasium. Okay? The second thing is to approve the final language. Now, the problem is both Janice and I are former English professors, and if you put a bunch of English teachers in a room, they can never agree on the language. It's just the nature of the beast. But we are very close to settling on a final language. And what's important is that the marker, which is obviously going to be permanent, that it reflects both Coach Curtis's coaching career, but it also mentions the fact that he had been an educator here in this community and had been at one time the school superintendent. And then the third thing that we need to do is raise the money for the marker. And Janice and I have made it a New Year's resolution to collect the necessary funds to get this marker finally put in place in front of the gymnasium so that the school district would not be responsible for collecting the money to pay for this marker. The cost of the marker is $2,500. When we did the marker in Mooresville, we went to some institutions in that town, and they readily came up with money to pay for it. We've already made some preliminary inquiries here in Martinsville to collect the money, and we feel very confident that people will come forward and we can get this marker in place to honor really what are great residents of this community and one of the great residents of people involved in this school district. I'm having to answer any questions you have.
What size marker would we be talking about?
It, it's a standardized size. It's about 28 inches long and about 48 inches wide. It's a standard size Mr. Brockton used, and then there's like a little crown on top of it. If the marker, we would be allowed to put language about Mr. Curtis on both sides. And that's the tricky situation because you have about 307 characters on each side of the marker. So that becomes a bit of a challenge to make sure you hit all the high points and yet stay within that boundary.
Well, Dr. Moore, I know we had, then probably a year or two ago, we had agreed that, was it the Kiwanis?
Lions Club.
Lions Club, thank you, would erect something out there. Would that be a conflict?
No, what I, what the Lions Club was contemplating, and I still think that they had that in worst as a memorial to John Wooden.
Right.
At the time of the bicentennial, one of the ideas that was being proposed by my bicentennial committee was to erect a marker for John Wooden. The problem was, with everything else that was going on in the bicentennial that time, unfortunately fell by the wayside. The problem then is next year, for whatever reason, the Indiana Historical Bureau decided that anyone who was going to have, who's going to have a marker, I got pride in it. The problem, the problem was- The problem, the problem was that they changed the rules, and they said anybody, if you're going to have a marker to commemorate an individual that had to get 20 years, well, John died in 2010, so we have to wait for him. But we don't have any problem with Mr. Curtis.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ask for a motion to approve that the historical marker be placed as requested.
I move to approve the placement of the historical marker.
A second, please.
I'd be honored to second that.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Our next motion is to ask the permission to solicit bids for the auditorium project. We're going to be doing an auditorium lighting project. This is being covered from funds from last year and is in our operations.
I ask for a motion to grant permission to solicit bids as requested.
I move to grant permissions to solicit bids.
A second, please.
Second.
And, um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we'd ask the board to allow us to issue a request for proposal for architectural services for future projects.
I ask for a motion to issue the RFP as requested.
I move to issue the RFP.
A second, please.
All seven.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we'd ask the board to issue an RFP, a request for proposal for debt issuance financial advisory services, and this is a formality if you're going to do a block issue.
I ask for a motion to issue the RFP as requested.
I move to issue the RFP.
A second, please.
I second.
Um, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, before we talk about the next, um, motion and the board votes on it, I would ask, uh, I would just like to dispel some rumors that seem to be out there. Uh, first, Perrigan Elementary will have a principal. They'll start the process when, once the board makes a final determination. Um, there's also been a rumor that we're closing Perrigan Elementary. This is no plan to close Perrigan, and it is not. It is not true, so that rumor is not true. Um, and also under state law, there's a clearly defined process in how we got to where we are today, and that process includes an initial letter in December, a private conference with the superintendent, and another private conference with the board. Unfortunately, state law does not provide parents of the community an opportunity to provide input until tonight. Employing confidentiality laws do not provide the public an opportunity to have information or all the details in there, and for that I apologize.
I ask for a motion to approve the non-renewal of the contract and to authorize the superintendent to issue notice as requested.
I move to not renew the contract and to authorize the superintendent to issue notice.
Is there a second?
To issue notice.
A second, please.
All seven.
Um, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Can I have a microphone, please? I believe Mrs. Oswald is a sincere and conscientious administrator and is one who's willing to do what is best for the students in our school district. School business is people business, and Mrs. Oswald is caring, invested, and connected to the town of Perrigan, and no one should ever question her love for the kids that attend Perrigan Elementary School. These are qualities I look before when selecting someone to lead our buildings. After careful review of Mrs. Oswald's provided information, it is clear to me that the data, the associated details, and the testimonials that you people provided tonight do not support this motion. Thus, I move to immediately delete the motion on her non-renewal.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Uh, before the next motion, I wanted to address some of the conditions about our financial condition. We practice something called future-forward financial conditioning, where we anticipate enrollment declines and then do budget cuts in advance of those. In 2019, we'll be graduating approximately 350 students, but we only have a projected kindergarten class of 275. This represents a loss of about $450,000 in projected revenue starting in the fall of 2019. We have a commitment to pay teacher increases both this year, and we want to provide those in the future, and we believe that not ripping teachers is an important goal. We also believe the most important person in a kid's life is their teacher. I've taken a salary reduction of payment offensive of about $25,000 to help. To help with justice laws, we are recommending two administrator reps, the title director and the Hammond's director. From December to now, the Hammond's director has found another job, so that motion did not appear tonight. Title director, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the title director found another job. We will still have oversight for title, and we will have a title program at all of our current schools. The duties of the title director will be assumed by another person. We will still have an alternative school. It will not be going away. We will still service alternative school students, and oversight of this program from an administrative standpoint will come from one of our other current administrators.
I request approval for the non, I mean, I ask for a motion to approve the non-renewal of the contract and to authorize the superintendent to issue notice as requested. I will be abstaining from this vote for ethical reasons.
I move to not renew the contract and to authorize the superintendent to issue notice.
Is there a second, please?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have a comment. Again, because of the legal conflict of interest, I will not vote on this motion, but I would like to exercise my right to make a statement about Hammond's Alternative School. Over the last two years, the enrollment at Hammond's has grown from 37 students to 107. It's the only school in our district that has grown in enrollment. Forty-seven students that attend Hammond's in the last two years were previously not attending our district. Translated, Hammond's is bringing in new money to our district. The 2018 graduating class at Martinsville High School had the second highest graduation rate in the last 10 years. Almost 10% of that graduating class last year attended Hammond's Alternative School. Hammond's Alternative School is growing rapidly, keeping students in school and graduating its students. It is doing exactly what it is designed to do. If we are truly basing our decisions on doing what is best for these Hammond students, school board members should not vote for any changes. Thank you.
Next, we'd ask the board to approve the recommendation from the technology department to restructure so that we will not be filling the assistant network position.
I ask for a motion to approve the recommended technology department restructuring proposal and hourly pay adjustments as requested.
I move to approve the recommended proposal and hourly pay adjustments.
Second, please.
All seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The final request is to approve a set of theater textbooks for our theater clubs. We work hand-in-hand with ID Tech. This class is part of our statewide general education core RD class. In other words, if kids take the right number of classes, including this one, they can qualify to have their first year of freshman college paid for in a sense and wave. So it's important that we align our curriculum adoption with ID Tech. Mr. Smith at high school has done that, and we just need your input to guide where those books.
I ask for a motion to adopt the textbooks as requested.
I move to adopt the textbooks.
A second, please.
I second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we always like to recognize, um, some of the many things that are going on in our school district that are amazing. And the first one, congratulations to Coach Sturgeon and our decathlon team. They're state champions for the third year in a row. And they set scoring records for the state and for our school. Uh, they'll be competing at nationals in Minnesota, and we're so very, very proud of them.
Congratulations to our MHS wrestling team and Coach Runyon on a great season. Great job by Will Nix, Micah Dodson, and Griffin Stein for making it to the semi-state, and to Griffin for making it to state as well.
The drama department performed Little Women, and our congratulations, congratulations go out to them for an outstanding performance, and good luck to Coach Stags and our boys' basketball team with their first game of the sectional on Tuesday, February 26th against Franklin. The game will be played at Center Grove and begins at 7:30. Don't forget about the Artesian Chess Club hosting the Martinsville Team Chess Championship on March 23rd, 24th, and 25th at Martinsville High School. This event will involve elementary, middle school, and high school students. They are looking for volunteers, so if you can help, they greatly appreciate it. It's going to be well over a thousand people visiting our Martinsville that day, that weekend, so, uh, so check, just check social media, and I'm sure if you're interested in helping, they could love to have your help.
We would also like to say happy FFA week to Green Township. We're proud of all of you and your efforts in the agricultural program.
Thank you very much. I ask for a, um, motion for adjournment. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for March 21st at 6:30 PM. Motion for adjournment, please.
I move that we adjourn.
A second, please.
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.